Lawrence Fisher, Jimmy Ray, the leadership of all the line, Brenda Colley, and Clay.
That's great. All good coming to you right now, just humble hearts, Charlotte, thankful for the privilege of serving our county, thankful for all the members of the county that are here tonight, and we just pray that you'll, your hand will be on us as we conduct this county business, while we also lift up the ones that are close to us, our friends, our family, may they be sick or hurting tonight, oh, we just lift them up, ask them to put your hands on them, they'll be your presence tonight. Well, as always, forgive us when we fail, who do you say?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clay Garner, please. Over here is David McCuller.
Here.
Chad Belton.
Here.
Terry McCormick.
Here.
Brian Seuss.
Here.
Pamela Carroll.
Here.
Jimmy Hollinsworth.
Here.
Tricia Underwood.
Here.
Keith Jernigan.
Here.
Jay Weatherford.
Here.
Adam Toll.
Here.
Brenda Colley.
Here.
Philip Hollinsworth.
Here.
Jimmy Ray.
Here.
Rex Davis.
Here.
Jeff Kelly.
Here.
Nikki Moore. Brad Hunt.
Here.
Doug Knight.
Here.
Willie Taft.
Here.
All right, you have a form tonight, we'll be taking it with you. First item will be approval of minutes, you have a copy of the minutes, several meetings will be done tomorrow, and then the motion approved. So. Motion by Jimmy Ray to approve the minutes as presented, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Willie Taft, any questions or discussion? Here you go, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carried. Next item on the general will be the committee reports. Mr. Mayor, you want to start?
Yes, sir. I'll start with the solid waste committee, um, as you guys have in your packet, I'd actually forgotten that meeting, there was nothing to take action on from it, we had a meeting on Tuesday, November the nineteenth, um, it was just another date on the landfill, um, actually, the, the class three will actually close in 2026, um, if we don't take any, any other action, that's why it's been set up to close, um, we have to monitor for so many years, actually quit taking garbage and keep it covered up, um, and the class one, uh, we would just have to move some topsoil to use it, um, if I'm correct, as far as install them or something, we can still use that as a burn site, um, and we also have another burn site that's permitted out there, um, we discussed the collection, update, uh, and we discussed some future disposal options, I will get to them on the next meeting that we had, December the second, um, and it was more of the, there was a motion made to stop pickup until the bill is paid in full, um, our county attorney, uh, then it was a motion to table it until legal counsel, uh, because of that, we've run into issues, we discussed that in the past, um, but they, Craig recommended, he needs to meet with the solid waste committee, uh, before we take any action on that, um, the rate will go up, uh, that was made when we approved this last contract, to go up with the CPI, so when the, when the January bills go out, they will be seventy-one dollars per quarter, um, and that was, we wasn't, we wasn't a hundred percent sure about that motion at that time, that it had already been made, we thought it had, um, but that will be the new rate starting in January, um, so that pretty much, uh, then we also met with Edwin, again, on the incinerator project, um, and that started out as a twenty-two million dollar project, I think, am I correct, Brad, is what we started out, and we first had discussions about that, um, so we convinced him to sharpen his pencil, super sharp, uh, basically the way I understood our meeting the other night, no action was taken on anything, um, but that would, that would be, that twenty-two million would be a full, full-on everything that a metropolitan area would need that has no other resources, um, and so we're taking a lot of that off for rural county, um, he's pretty confident he can get that down to around ten million with what we don't, we will not need in a rural county, we already have a land, landfill site set up, a lot of the permitting that was, that was figured into his first cost, um, so we've agreed, he's gonna get some numbers, sharpened up and come back to us, uh, we have, still have a lot of questions and discussions to go on that matter, but we're under this current contract for another four years, if I'm correct, um, so we're looking at every option available there, and that concludes my report for the solid waste. I'll move on to the budget committee, we have prior to this meeting, uh, as a recommendation by our county attorney, uh, I will make a motion to approve the rural economic development promissory note, which the paperwork we discussed at the last meeting, the paperwork has to be turned in, uh, by January fourteenth, so with Craig's recommendation, uh, we need to approve that at this meeting, that is a, basically a credit line for two million dollars, if we need, um, it is no obligation unless we spend the money.
At zero interest.
At zero interest, with a nine-year payback, um, our plan for that, if we, our current ambulance contract is two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars, if we do engage in this, uh, get full on with Magnolia and ER, and they will provide the ambulance service, uh, this will, that two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars, which we don't, it may be the, a different price next year, um, but that will service the debt on this two million dollars at zero percent. That is a motion, Mr. Flurk, to approve the rural economic development promissory note.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Jimmy Ray.
Right.
Clarifications, Jay, the two-nineteen would include the ambulance services, is that what I understood you just said?
The two-nineteen.
The two-nineteen.
That's what we're currently paying.
Right.
Yes.
Is that gonna be the payback vehicle?
It will be one, it will be one of them.
Okay, but you said it included the ambulance services, did I understand that correctly?
If we do this two million dollars?
Yes, sir.
That is Magnolia's intent, to provide the ER and the ambulance service.
Thank you.
Yes.
So for my clarification, once they do that, the two-nineteen we're currently paying can go forward this?
Yes.
Promissory note, thank you.
Yes.
Will Magnolia provide the same amount of ambulance as that?
We're hoping Tennessee.
Yeah, and, and the discussions we've had with them, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, is we would purchase, and we would purchase two, one or two ambulances.
For that, for with the grant, doesn't it be a question next year, we can buy the people?
So we, we, we buy the ambulances, they provide the service, they, they maintain them, maybe, uh, staff them, and, uh, and that's it.
Keep in mind too, guys, there is nothing, and so it's been nothing in writing saying they're gonna provide any type of service like that.
No, you're right, Keith, the, the ambulance contract, as he said, when I talked to him Friday, that, he said, let me get the notes, what he did say exactly, so I don't say something wrong, he said steps, he said, y'all remember when I sat in the middle of this commission meeting and talked to you guys, he said, I said the word steps, he said, the first step is the ER of an operation, the second step of that would be the ambulance service, provide ambulance service in Magnolia County, that's what he said.
Again, I can tell you something, but that don't mean that they don't know water and go to law until I, until I put the signature on, because there are other people inside Magnolia saying otherwise.
Well, then, and I talked to.
They all, they do have a governing body, and their governing body also is the county commission down there in the, the city also, there are people that's against putting, putting ambulance service in McNairy County, and I'm just, I would like that in writing before we start making financial decisions dependent upon he said, she said.
Well, again, you're not gonna get a contract on that until we get the, the ER, said that again Friday, he said that city right here, when we agreed to approve his contract at that point in time for, for them to provide the service for the ER.
And as, as far as passing this, that's fine.
Yep.
And I mean, it's probably the right thing to do, but keep in mind, before any money's spent, on how, how it's gonna, how it's supposed to be paid for, and it's gonna be paid for without subsidizing the ambulance service you currently have, so if we don't have ambulance service in place, and somebody's gonna have to pay for that ambulance service too.
That's another year low on this payment, there's, it's a ten-year note.
But it takes two year to order one ambulance.
I know, that's what the statute of law is.
Well, that's the question I have, if we cancel our service once we sign this contract, we're not, our ambulance is that day.
We're not canceling ambulance service once we sign the contract.
Once we have an ER operational?
No.
That's not gonna make any difference for the ambulance.
So if we, so we have, we open the doors on the ER, we're still gonna have the same contract with the ambulance service that we have now?
Mr. Zio, here.
Yeah.
Correct.
Until, until something, yes, unless, unless another option, another contract comes open and, and we cancel that.
So we're not looking to order and buy ambulance service again?
No, not just that.
For a key, so probably a year and a half, two years, you know, we're gonna get a year or so out, at least, and we buy the, the, the ambulance home, which is not one year left, one, you can buy it anywhere.
But in order to get this passed, guys, probably the right thing, go ahead and open this zero percent interest up, but before any money is spent, keep that in mind on how it's gonna be paid back, because that paying back is up in the air right now, and if you do use that two million dollars, you are obligated to pay that back, so just keep that in mind.
We can, then, if ambulance comes back to this commission, help us.
So is there a future possibility where we will never utilize Magnolia's ambulance service and just keep what we got if our deal ain't good enough?
Yes, sir, you could do that.
Okay.
So before anything's taken out of this, by the credit, I touched with Wade, we purchased it, it's there if we need it, right?
That's right, even further than that, when you go back to the original figures that took, now we're talking about that a little while ago, even that money, before anything's spent on those grants or anything else, those notes that we brought back to this commission, and a hundred percent prove like we do everything, every time. All right, we have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the rural promissory note. Any other questions or discussions? Here you go, you call it over the floor.
Clay Garner?
Yes.
David McCuller?
Yes.
Chad Belton?
Yes.
Terry McCormick?
Yes.
Brian Seuss?
Yeah.
Pamela Carroll?
No.
Jimmy Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Tricia Underwood?
No.
Keith Jernigan?
Yes.
Jay Weatherford?
Yes.
Adam Toll?
Yes.
Brenda Colley?
Yes.
Philip Hollinsworth?
No.
Jimmy Ray?
Yes.
Rex Davis?
Yes.
Jeff Kelly?
Yes.
Brad Hunt?
Yes.
Doug Knight?
Yes.
Willie Taft?
Yes.
Okay, next item, uh, with that involving the budget committee, was, uh, Craig Kendy recommended that, uh, this is a motion that the county clerk and the mayor are authorized to sign the R E D L loan documents when they are, before January fourteenth, when they are presented, that is a motion that the clerk and the mayor have authority to sign, those documents.
Let's move forward, I'll present. Lost in myself signing that document, we have a second.
Second.
Second, we're with the first one. Brad. Brad Hunt. We have a motion, second on the floor, any questions or discussions? Here you go, you call it over again, this person.
Clay Garner?
Yes.
David McCuller?
Yes.
Chad Belton?
Yes.
Terry McCormick?
Yes.
Brian Seuss?
Yeah.
Pamela Carroll?
No.
Jimmy Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Tricia Underwood?
No.
Keith Jernigan?
Yes.
Jay Weatherford?
Yes.
Adam Toll?
Yes.
Brenda Colley?
Yes.
Philip Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Jimmy Ray?
Yes.
Rex Davis?
Yes.
Jeff Kelly?
Yes.
Brad Hunt?
Yes.
Doug Knight?
Yes.
Willie Taft?
Yes.
Seven things done, most packed.
One more item we discussed, it does not require any action, uh, it's point of information, that, uh, the trustee's office is going to have to have new computers next year, and I look for the rest of the county, some of the rest of the county is on the local government, uh, Ross said he is not on local government, thankfully, um, but Microsoft is going to eleven, um, Stanley's computers will not support that, that he has currently, uh, he has a bid through local government for twenty-three-seven, the computers will not be here till July, will not be in the next year's budget, um, so I look for who else is on local government that this could possibly, that they don't know about yet, um, you know what, top you did, like?
I don't know.
But, but that computer system will be in real time, just to enable link with the mayor's office being the same, uh, the same system, I think you're gonna have to have some updates, sort of, three, and he has to have five in the trustee's office, so, um, it's just a point of information, um, I recommended that he go ahead and, and order those, I know we don't have a choice, so, um, he had asked me, also with that, looking at next year's budget, um, the solid waste, that rate increase, uh, still leaves us with a two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar deficit in the solid waste part, that we are looking at, uh, fulfilling some way, somehow, before next year, otherwise the fund balance will be in the negative. Thank you.
Like having a hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, right, Steve, that we collected this year, like we did last year.
Hundred-and-thirty-three, yeah.
Hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars, going there, so it's gonna be not be that bad upside down at the end of the time, and what we did last year, for those that don't know, uh, we're not asking people, the actual cost last year was twenty-two dollars and seventy-four, eighty-four cents, or thirty-three dollars it cost a month to provide the service, and what we did last year was, it took, you know, lawsuit collections, and used two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of that to make it whole, so we've placed like a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand on that now, so we probably won't be that bad off again next year, if we wanna do that again.
And why does our lawsuit collections down here say a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand?
Twenty percent goes to the attorney.
How much?
Twenty percent.
All right, any other committee reports, David?
Real bored, we met and had some discussion about the wheel tax, and the problem with the wheel tax is, whether people want it or don't want it, county highway department gets ninety-five, ninety to ninety-five percent gets funded from the gas tax imposed by the state of Tennessee, and they send that money down, the county's putting very little money in, so, this is, this is something that should have been done years ago, but there has basically just a lack of commitment to do it, sooner or later, it's gonna be wheel tax or property tax increase for highway department, people just get it in their head, can't keep putting it off, and it had to be done, sent to Nashville in January, we had to come back, be voted on, and sent to election, and then there's, really, there's no general election this next year, so you'd have to set up a special election to handle it, to pay for it, you probably have a low turnout, and more or less, there's some county commissions are not in favor of it, so basically, we're just determined to stop, and continue quick discussions. Uh, the road, I found out about that today, this tweet thief or tweet lane.
Tweet.
And there is two hump, there's two, is, we talked about it, I was six, seven, eight months ago, and there was the paperwork, but I don't really feel comfortable doing with it, because I haven't seen the signed, give you an example, just to let everybody know, when you want a suspicion, we'll close the road, the first thing you do, every landlord that that property road caused, you have to go to every landlord owns land, touching or accessing through that road, and get them to sign a legal paper that they were willing to close it, and let the county shut the road down, where no traffic, and supposedly it's been done, but I have not seen any of the paperwork, it's not in this, so I don't feel comfortable voting on it until we see the actual signed documents, the two, there's just two landlords owns all that land, so we'll put it off to next month, if we see the signed papers.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, the emergency services committee met Thursday night, and discussed a few things, and I guess the first thing we'll, we'll do will be the air Medicare network services contract, and what that is, or the wing.
Yes.
Our air med contract for citizens of county, that's a forty-thousand-dollar contract yearly, and if what that is, if you're insured, you have insurance, and you live inside McNairy County, and you are picked up inside McNairy County, your calls should be free with what we're signing tonight, if we, we sign it free. If, if you have insurance, if you have medical insurance, if not, they will bill you at the Medicare allowable rate for a helicopter ride, okay? But again, the trick of it is, you have to be a county resident, and they have to pick you up inside McNairy County, okay? You can upgrade your services for fifty-five dollars, uh, standard annual rate, or for seniors, it's forty-five. But that is the hospital wing and airbag and all that's combined. Three-hundred-and-twenty locations now throughout the United States, so all this, if you get picked up by a helicopter, it's gonna come, you under, just what I told you, in McNairy County, you're from McNairy County, and have insurance, you don't owe anything, so, uh, but that is a forty-thousand-dollar annual agreement for the citizen.
It's bad, money's budgeted, yeah.
Money is already booked, you're right, Jay. So, uh, I'll put that in the form of a motion to, uh, pass that.
Second. A motion for the air Medicare contract, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Willie Taft, any questions or discussions? Here you go, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Those who care, thank you.
All right, next thing we discussed, emergency services with the rural economic development promissory note that passed a minute ago, passes on to the budget committee, and then, uh, I guess we'll get into it now with fire trucks, we got, uh, two fire trucks, if y'all remember back in October, that chief told, and mayor said we needed to, we're gonna let go surplus, so we'll give them one to Hornsby, and one to Hendel, well, with understanding at the time that nobody in the county needed it, well, the motion was made, there were some questions about if everybody in the county had been notified and asked about needing the fire truck before we give them to another county, that is taxpayers' trucks that's paid for them from McNairy County, so we wanna make sure that they're due diligence, and make sure that nobody inside the county can use them before we give them to another county. So anyway, it was passed back, motion was made to carry it back to the committee for November, so in November, we'll find out that phone calls were made to most, if not all, there's questions there, if not all, the municipalities and everybody in the county about needing, well, it gets into a he said, she said type thing, when there's no paperwork or paper trail on, hey, I was told, or I wouldn't ask, or whatever, so the committee's recommendation was to have the chief email all municipalities and ask paper trail if anybody needed it, so, they did, and we had a couple of people come back, said they would, they would like to have it, uh, main one being Selmer, Selmer got a couple of trucks down, and, uh, could use it right now, so, that, and then we had a few, said, hey, I would really like to have it, but I just don't have nowhere to store it at the moment, we could use it, but I just don't have nowhere to store it, so, you know, we'll pass, so everybody basically passed except for Selmer, so Selmer needs, they got lots of tow trucks down there, corresponding emails and, uh, stuff, they really need the truck, so the committee, emergency services committee made a recommendation and motion to give Selmer the international truck, and to sell the Ford truck and have the proceeds go back into McNairy County Fire, uh, the proceeds go to the county fire department, uh, but before we do that, I don't think we ever actually voted to surplus the trucks, so I'm gonna say we put, uh, I'll make a motion that we consider those two trucks surplus for the county. We'll have to make a counter motion to the Ford did not surplus, and say for further review about with ISO, CTAS, review of county's fire, and it'd be reserved till that's over to see, but, because if we sell it, you'd be lucky, get fifteen thousand dollars for it, I'd hate to sell the truck, get rid of it, it did come back, and something shows up, and we could put it in another part of the county that we hadn't thought about, just gonna make a difference in people north of Leekwood, and say west part of the county, but have it add to the water supply for fires, and we could, actually, if there's a review for some things aren't counted, then we can decide what to do. Hold on, David, give me a motion. Okay, is that wrong? You have a second?
You don't have a second, you keep making.
You have a second before you do this. Okay. Mayor, you got a gal.
Gift of honor.
You might use it. Number three, the three, come on in, it's a gal, number one, sit down, number two taps, shut up, three taps, stand up, now, everybody in here knows that, room's full, two taps, you shut up, three taps, you sit down, that's the rule. Okay. Now, you have a second, and then David, you can work on some. Okay.
Clarify, one of the two trucks was going to surplus, correct? That's what your motion is?
Uh, there's no motion with both trucks.
Both trucks.
Both trucks go to the, go surplus, that's, that's stemming from the chief and mayor saying, hey, back in October, we're gonna give two trucks away to two different counties, and they wouldn't need it, so that was, and since then, there's been other faults and all that, for Dave to come in, but the original motion was to have the two trucks for surplus.
Second. All right, you have a second to Keith's motion, uh? Alright, you have a second to Keith's motion, but
I would like to amend the motion to reserve the Ford tanker from being surplus until the CTS, ISO study is completed. To see if there's any other alternative use to the capital citizens of McNairy County's fire protection. Say the northern and western part of county, where my biggest concerns are. All about disposal after that, if there's no valid place to put them in county.
Second, that. Alright, David, you made motion to not surplus the Ford tanker.
Correct. I've thought about this a lot since we had that meeting, and the meeting was so confusing, and there's so much thrown around and acquisitions, that sometimes I'd be better having a few days to think, and we have plenty of time to get rid of that truck later, if we got rid of it, or something to do with it.
Alright, so we want to vote on amendment first, without motion and a second. Um, last clerk, is there any other questions or discussions about amendment, the motion first?
We're voting on the amendment.
That's right, you're voting on the second truck, the Ford truck.
The whole church was voting on the amendment to change the main motion.
Gotcha.
Alright, so let's say the main motion, though. As if it was amended.
The main motion was to surplus both trucks. My motion is to strike out the Ford. Strike out the Ford and hold for that study, ensure that we have the, I don't think anybody knows what used fire trucks.
Just strike the Ford, that's all amendments, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Right, the motion is to amend the written motion of surplusing both trucks to state that we're not gonna surplus the Ford, hold it in reserve. Any questions? Hearing none, everyone in favor of amendment, say aye. Anyone opposed, amendment carries. Alright, you're back to the main motion then.
Alright, so, like a motion.
Surplus the international.
The emotion as amended, it's surplus the international. Surplus the international truck. Second.
No, it's already second.
Nope, you're back to debate on the main motion as amended.
I stand corrected.
We did have a motion to second, but Phillip did second.
I just want to make sure you not second.
Make you forth, it matters.
Alright, so the motion is we're gonna surplus the truck.
Right.
Alright, any questions? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, now.
Alright, so with, with that motion passing and surplus now. Like I said, Salmer City needed the truck. Well, there's been some back and forth discussion. So I asked, I asked Chief Stowe, Mayor Watt, is really needed from the city. If we all try to do this and start getting long, you know, we're, there's been some headbutting going on between county and city, and all this stuff, and the fire and all that. So we're trying to get it, we're gonna try to work, we're making the first step of working with the city, Salmer. And it's long in the past been that McNairy County trucks and the county fire could not fill up, or do their hold test, pump test, whatever they got to do inside Salmer City, from the fire hydrants. And I think that's been a, stating my lines, that's been an issue that would be good if we could do that.
It would be good if we could.
So, contacted the city, and they are willing to enter into agreement that McNairy County trucks, uh, fire stations can come and fill their trucks up, do their hold test, pump test, and whatever they need to do. Uh, the hydrants, just not the black hydrants. Black hydrants don't think fair enough, I don't understand all that main goal, but I understand a little bit. But anyway, they're willing to sign an agreement if we give them that truck. Cause they have two down, we give them that truck, they'll start letting us, they got three down, that's all, they'll start letting us use the city, the hydrants and stuff to do all that, whatever they need to do. So that's, that's a little bit of agreement that we are willing to work together on. That come from the mayor, chief, and everybody else. So I'm gonna put the form of a motion that we let Salmer City have that international fire truck upon the written agreement.
For the clarity, now this is the international tanker.
This is the international tanker that we just declared surplus.
Yes, sir.
Right, I have a motion and a second move.
So this tanker's gonna stay in the city, stored in the city, and not cut up. Cause I've heard that, I've heard that tell.
Well, first of all, let me clarify something else too, this was, this was, this was brought up in the committee, and there's a little bit of headbutting and all that. Once we declare that truck surplus, and correct me if I'm wrong, once we declare that sur, that truck surplus while it go, there are no stipulations.
The title goes with the truck.
Title goes with them. There are no stipulations we can put on that truck whatsoever, okay? So.
I'm not asking for stipulations.
No, I'm just saying.
Asking for him to do with, with what he says he's gonna do with it.
Well, the city, the city wants.
That's all I'm asking.
There, there was some questions over that play, I agree.
I know, that's why I wanted to answer. I mean, just wanting something to want it, don't help anybody.
My understanding was, he's gonna reciprocate, he's gonna use the truck, if they call, he's gonna go.
So his tankers are down.
Yeah, there was a need that was, that was voiced on two different occasions. That was the whole premise for me wanting to, instead of having one of our municipalities having to borrow money to do whatever, try to obtain a tanker.
I just tried to view it as. Two different things, there was three trucks down, and then I heard it was only two down, that one of them's fixed.
One down.
Chief, go ahead and tell us.
Keith's got an email. There's still three down.
Yeah, it was.
They've got, they've got one truck running. It's, it's not right, it won't run twenty mile air loaded with water. We got a current email today from Ridley Mountain. The mechanic that works this area, he was out with pneumonia last week, we still have three trucks down. And actually, my tanker today has developed an air leak, so going down the road, the compressor's keeping up, but it's, it's pouring air, so. That's their next priority, when he can get here, and then pull the dash out and fix it.
How many trucks does Salmer need?
Air far, air flow in industrial park is sixty-seven hundred and fifty gallons a minute. That's Phillips', everything's industrial park. Our ladder and platform, they're considered elevated string devices. But I've pulled our reserve truck out now. So right now, we've just got three engines going.
Break it down in a farmer car, how many trucks y'all need?
Five engines and one reserve.
I don't know, but I do know I had a neighbor whose house burnt back in Bigwood, on Airport Road, and the city of Salmer was first ones there.
Well, that's my whole point. Why do they need a truck?
I don't know, they say they need it, they need it, we're not firefighters, we don't know.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking questions.
What kind of truck is this, that they're wanting?
A tanker.
Well, I mean, what, what is it?
International tanker.
Well, either international. Ninety-three international, what kind of shape is this, is this unit in? I mean, is this gonna suffice?
It may, it may bring, on the market, it may bring what, thirty pounds?
Well, I mean, what I'm asking is, if they're gonna put it to use every day, I mean, is it gonna hold up? I mean, is it, you know, you get a ninety-three model international DT four sixty-six, and anything gonna happen on that, so I mean.
Here, here's my thing, guys. Can that truck service Salmer and McNairy County? Could it potentially save lives inside of Salmer and McNairy County?
I, I want it to, but I want, I want the Salmer chief to work with the county chief. On a daily basis.
That's what we're all up to play, I promise, well. And that's where this agreement, that's where this agreement is trying to come from. Is, hey, we're, you know, there's been butt heads in the past, guys, we're trying, we're trying with the, and that's the reason we called the mayor and chief and all them, talked to them, say, hey, guys, I asked Chief Stowe what he needed, what, what could he use most from the self, from Salmer City. And that's where these filling the, filling the trucks up and pump test and all that stuff come, come in play yet. And that's the reason I put it in that form of a motion like I did, upon the agreement, they will get that truck. I mean, we gotta start somewhere, guys, we're trying to work it up as best we can.
Let me add this, after the meeting the other night, I told Keith and them, we need to get through Christmas. I've got two trucks located, I've got to get with the guy next week, see what it's gonna cost me to get them refurbished. But I told him sometime after the end of January, that we would call a meeting with the ten city chiefs and emergency services, and we will sit down and start trying to work these problems out. The county chief and David.
I don't really know who I'm, who I'm asking this question to, but, um, why, why would we not wait on the, uh, instead of doing anything with either one of them, why would we not wait on this?
About the ISO.
CTS and ISO, um.
Well, the CTS, I don't want to answer that.
And that's somebody's opinion, besides somebody local. That, that have no, no dog in the race, besides the DDF and my.
Well, I'm gonna tell you the dog in the race, and the dog in the race is this headbutting stuff going on, personal agenda.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Now, let me, let me explain this. Let me explain this. There were no stipulations in October when it come before this full commission, none, no stipulations whatsoever. The only stipulation come into play after they found, after people found out that Salmer City was interested in a truck. That's where all this ISO stuff come in, the emails that you got there, I can put it in order for you on how it come, come to play. But all this come to play because somebody found out there's head knocking going on, and head banging going on, cause I don't like this, and I don't like that. But in October, though, there were no stipulations, when all of them that had anything to do with it, come before this full commission, want both them trucks surplus, and give to the different counties, okay? Not, not just keep it here in the county, give, give a taxpayer money away, basically, that we bought and paid for, give it away to other counties to help them, that maybe they can come and help us, I get that. But in October, there was nothing about ISO and all that, studies done and all that, but then, when somebody found out somebody else wanted it inside the county, all of a sudden, there's all kinds of stipulations going on.
I would like to say that I don't, I got, and when your package is back, when we wanted to surplus these trucks out, give them to the county, there's, there's in there that there was stipulations given in the original. And Chief Stowe, the reason he made this recommendation is because I know the operation in McNairy County, and when you give these trucks to Hornsby and Enville, they're gonna come back directly to our county to help our county in the northeastern part and the western part. So when I went and made that form of motion, it's because I know McNairy County, and I know, I know where I need it. Reason ISO and David, with David Miller and Mark Allen and CTS brought in in the last minute, is because this was tabled, and, and they don't agree that I know what I'm saying in my operation, therefore, I then asked CTS to come in, a third party, to verify if I'm saying the truth or not. I would've been glad to bring them in, first, if I knew there was gonna be a problem where you guys do not trust, that I knew where these trucks needed to go. So I did not bring CTS in because Anthony Carr asked for a tanker, that's absolutely not, that's not true. I brought him in here because he and some of the commissioners did not agree with me where I want and needed these trucks for McNairy County. So that is incorrect. I brought specifically in here, a third party, after the fact, to prove that I'm right or wrong. And again, that, that, that is accurate. And I'm here to you, it's up to you gentlemen to do what you want, but I just wanna correct that statement. And the stipulations are in here that were pre-written already, it was not exactly the same it was later, but there were stipulations always to truck, from the very beginning. So it's not accurate that there was no stipulations. I got the letters right here.
Clay, that's what it was, the stipulation come from, once you surplus the truck, there are no stipulations, right? So once you surplus that truck, we can't say there's stipulations on it.
Keith, I want to add something.
Only reason I'm asking is the first story was, they wanted the truck, cause they was gonna use the tank out of it, cut it, try to find a new chassis, and all that. I mean, here, I'm just asking that question. Then there was a second story. I'm not asking for stipulations, I'm asking for what's the truth.
I understand.
That's all I'm asking for.
Here's where I was.
If they need the truck.
I made the motion.
I have no problem with it.
I made the original motion, the very first night, and it was contingent on that everybody had been notified in the county, because this is county property.
It's a taxpayer.
I made the motion, I think, I don't, I don't think, I don't know what the process went from there, but it was to put those trucks where they needed to go. But it was contingent on everybody in the county being notified, when the notification wasn't a hundred percent, even though it wasn't perfect, and even though there's some question marks about email calls, or whoever, whatever. Here's what I'm at. I got a need inside my county. Got a municipality that will have to borrow. I understand, Clay, I want to make sure that everybody else understands. I don't care who it is, I don't care what their name is, and I don't care what they're gonna do. They, they vocalized a need inside our county that reciprocates services, and they have a need. How much of a need? I don't know if it's one or ten, I don't know, but that, that was, that's one truck, one out of the two. But I felt like there was a need, and for me to sit here and say, Salmer, you say you need it, but I'm not gonna let you have it, uh, because you're gonna have to go borrow money to fill that void, I didn't want to do that as a community, as a, as a county commissioner. So that, that led into how we got to. You got it.
We can sit here and make this up all night, just take a vote, if y'all give us the truck, or y'all won't. Me and the mayor's talked about it today, we met with Matt, we're gonna get through this. Just take a vote, give us the truck or not, whatever your all's decision is, don't go ahead. We do need the truck.
The remaining trucks, Phil, you know, with Chief Stowe, Phil, like, you know, the McNairy County?
Yes, the Ford, yeah, I mean, that's still.
No, that was not.
Absolutely not. Folks, think about what you voted on. Now, hold on, let me show y'all something. The Ford was not the same. I want the floor. This is how you do it. I'm the only person that has the floor. I can't give the floor to anybody but him, he can give the floor to anybody who wants to. This is gonna turn into a crap show real fast. Mr. Mayor, you need to keep a gavel in hand. We voted to surplus one truck and donate one truck. Jay, if you wanna undo that, after Dave's amendment, we can. You gotta rescind it. You voted for it, you have the right to rescind. Takes two thirds of the majority to do it. Now, folks, I want everybody in here to have the opportunity to talk all you want to, Matt. But unless you're an elected commissioner, unless he gives you the authority to speak, you don't get to. That's civil law. Now, we're gonna play by parliamentary procedure, we're gonna have to play by parliamentary procedure. Part of this room's for Chief Stowe, part of this room's city itself. That's okay.
But we're gonna have to play by the rules. Now, I'm gonna sit back down, Mr. Mayor, if you wanna turn it back over to your emergency services chairman, you can. But if you want to change what we've done, we gotta re-vote.
What do you have a motion on the first?
We all need to get along.
There, there is a motion on the floor, and I call the question.
I'm asking him what the motion is, so he can clarify, mother, how far we gonna go ahead?
I've got a motion.
The first motion.
Very first motion was to surplus both trucks. That was amended, to take the Ford out until C Task and I S O can examine. That cured. Second motion was to put the international a surplus, correct?
Correct.
And that passed. With one of them. Now, we've got a motion to let the C S Elmer have the international truck. Is that correct?
That's, well.
With a second from Ms. Carroll.
Well, now, with, uh, upon the signed agreement.
With the agreement, yes.
With the agreement.
Okay, that's what I've got. And Ms. Carroll seconded it, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. All right, just so everybody's clear, I'll go with that on the things there.
No. No.
That's right.
So, we, we amended the original motion to take the Ford out.
Correct.
But we did not designate what to do with that Ford.
No. No, it's in.
It's back in the county ownership.
It's not in surplus.
It's not in surplus.
It's just as is.
It's reserved. It's been reserved for me.
Instead, we voted on surplusing one and donating the other. But I don't think it was voted that way.
I understood that motion, that we were holding until I S O and.
We're not doing anything with the Ford.
Nothing with the Ford.
Mm-mm.
Ford was not declared surplus, is signed like the Ford.
The amended motion was to reserve the Ford for review by C Task, I S, I S O, etc., to see if the county could use it somewhere.
So, right now, we, it's just like we hadn't discussed the Ford.
Right. Correct.
Just leave the Ford out.
Yes.
All we're talking about is giving the international ninety-three international tanker to the C S Elmer.
Upon the written agreement.
Upon the written, signed agreement.
Unless somebody wants to rescind the motion.
Can't be rescined.
Can't be rescined.
Yeah, just go ahead and give it to them, I mean, seriously, this is getting ridiculous.
I say. To rescind until, until further, uh, discussion?
Well, I, I will say that the emergency services committee has discussed this for the last two months. And this is what the emergency services committee voted to bring forth a full commission.
And, and we get different information every meeting, so we might see what another couple of months flesh out. All right, so, you have a motion and a second to rescind. Motion, but Jay has seconded, Ryan says. Any discussion?
Question?
All right, call the roll, go yes to rescind, no to not.
I think that's it.
Text to those who are opposed.
When's the next, how far we to, when's the next emergency service meeting?
We have one scheduled, we call those when we need to have, so if we don't get this passed, then I'm gonna make a look at it, okay? Probably next year, you can ask. We don't have what we'll do tonight, so I'm gonna make a look at that.
I'd like, yeah, okay.
Call the roll, clerk, yes to rescind, no to not.
Billy Taft?
Yes.
Doug Knight?
Yes.
Brad Hunt?
No.
Jeff Kelly?
No.
Rick Davis?
Yes.
Jimmy Ray?
Yes.
Philip Pollensworth?
No.
Brenda Colley?
No.
Adam Toh?
No.
Jay Weatherford?
Yes.
Keith Jernigan?
No.
Tricia Underwood?
No.
Jimmy Hollisworth?
No.
Pamela Carroll?
No.
Ryan Seeth?
Yes.
Terry McCormick?
Yes.
Chad Belton?
Yes.
David McCullough?
Yes.
Clay Garner?
Yes.
Ten to nine?
What do you get, players?
What's the play? All right, we're back to the original motion.
Questions?
Questions been called for. I'm gonna ask first call roll again, you vote yes to give the truck to Selmer, you vote no, no.
Clay Garner?
Yes.
David McCullough?
No.
Chad Belton?
No.
Terry McCormick?
No.
Ryan Seeth?
Nope.
Pamela Carroll?
Yes.
Jimmy Hollisworth?
Yes.
Tricia Underwood?
Yes.
Keith Jernigan?
I'm cold.
Jay Weatherford?
No.
Adam Toh?
No.
Brenda Colley?
Yes.
Philip Pollensworth?
Absolutely.
Jimmy Ray?
No.
Rick Davis?
No.
Jeff Kelly?
Yes.
Brad Hunt?
Yes.
Doug Knight?
No.
Willie Taft?
Yes.
At ten to nine, what you got? Well, that's a fail, you gotta have eleven votes, pass. Those are failures.
I'm gonna have you jockeying, right?
You gotta have eleven votes, anything to pass.
Brad?
Hmm?
Do you do majority on nineteen or twenty-one?
That's state, so that would, uh, real, parliamentary would be majority of the president. But now, state to change something, we would have to have the majority of the total body. So, that, it would take a lot.
It takes eleven votes to pass anything, it's funny. Some things require to keep certain votes, it just takes eleven votes.
So, here's where you're at now. We still have a surplus truck.
Hmm.
Emergency services needs some moving in. Figure out what to do with that truck. Remember, I suggested S M C.
I get that.
Well, let me say something, there was a fire, I think, on, you mentioned something about Airport Road. I heard a fire of those nine off the racetrack, who was the first one there?
Selmer?
Who?
Selmer, I'm pretty sure Selmer.
Selmer was the first one there?
Where's Hornsby back up in county? How many times is Selmer back up in county, how many times is Hornsby back up?
I'm gonna say something.
So, again, guys, we're cutting our own dead gum throats.
Exactly.
Cutting our own throats.
As far as me, as a member of the emergency services committee, I have no problem, uh, working through equipment for other people. But I will, I will entertain another meeting, but I'd like to have another meeting with a more civil, organized way to get to the answers. Instead of all of the acquisition accusations and calling people liars and telling people they hate them. We didn't have a meeting, we just had a free-for-all.
Well, what's that got to do with giving, giving Selmer City a truck when they say they need it?
It's led to lots of rumors in the endo, in bad feelings.
It's just, it's just, I like him, or I don't like him, it's all that stuff saying that. Instead of looking for what's best for the citizens, who responds quicker, and what lives can be saved. If they say they need, I don't know that they don't need a truck, but if they say they do, I'm gonna take them for their word. You got a mayor and a chief sitting back there saying they, they can use it and save lives inside this county and inside the city.
Thank you.
And even outside the city. How does the power on respond to Airport Road? Now, come on, people.
All right, we have next item, there's reports in the county office. Any questions about those? Y'all still wanna point out, you have a county commissioner's schedule coming up, you need to check those dates, get them on the calendar. Unless the next year's schedule, county commission meeting, in fact, there. In public comments this time.
Yeah. Is it, is it true that you fired the Ag Center director?
Yes.
For what purpose? What reason?
She has a packet of information I gave her with that very well described in it. And if you want to come to my office, I'm happy to share that with you.
What?
I matched, uh, Attorney General, District Attorney, to look at some issues in relation to that, and I'm not gonna comment on that right now.
Is Russell Engel getting a paycheck for McNairy County?
Russell Engel has not been paid since, um, he was terminated.
Not one penny.
I'm sorry. Never you want to come to book or whatever. Any other questions, Coach?
Yes, sir, Mayor, I got a question. Uh, can you clarify what department, um, absorbed the hundred and six thousand dollar loss for the Ag Event Center back in November the second? Can you just discern that information about where that money came from?
We haven't done a budget amendment out of that, that budget, if you have anything else, Phil, that'll, that'll come at a later time, but it was ninety-some odd thousand, you know, of course, that's half.
I'm gonna ask twenty-five times, who took the loss? Where did the money come from? I just want clarification. Where the ninety-six, ninety-three, hundred-six, I've heard three different figures.
It ended up coming from fund balance, Phil, where it come from?
That's all I need to clarify.
Where did that come from? At the end of the day, you know, you.
I thought it might've came from the Ag Event Center budget, I wasn't sure if it came from there, I just want a clarification.
It can come from there, but I don't know that there's enough. You'll have to look at the profits and the loss. And we haven't done a budget amendment there, well, we did one about a month ago before the trace event, you know.
Is everything net on the event for the Trace Actings Council, is everything being paid?
Yes, sir.
But you don't know where the money came from? You don't know what, was it the general fund?
We, we paid exactly like y'all asked us, Dr. County Commission voted for us to pay. Yes, and it would've been out of the general fund.
Thank you, sir.
Couldn't have paid anything without you guys voting to do that.
Just clarification, Mayor.
Has somebody else been hired in her place?
No, absolutely not.
When is the Ag Center gonna have another meeting?
We'll post and advertise that position, Pam, like we always do.
Ag Center, Ag Center Committee hadn't had a meeting in over two months.
We couldn't meet.
That's more than a million dollars sitting up there and nothing being done about it, so we need that.
We got some events coming up, scheduled, but we'll meet soon, as soon as we can, but.
Is the meeting gonna be able to begin on the hiring of a new director?
We, we will put a committee together to hire the new director.
There's already a committee in place for that.
We'll put, we'll, if, if you meet, seven people meet, Keith, you gotta advertise it for two weeks before you can meet and talk to any other.
And it's been two months, we've had plenty of time to have a meeting.
Well, we scheduled one, and then the Hucky Dollar Road was meeting, that was on the top of that one. And we had three meetings in one night this past week, and we had a short month this time, we're gone.
But I'm saying, before the Trace, Trace Actings Bill, November the second, is before, before that was the last meeting.
I don't want to have anymore meetings that were heavy. I, I had a meeting every night and sometimes two or three a night, but I don't have, we haven't got a regular.
But, yeah, we got fire trucks stirring up all this controversy, but we got millions of dollars sitting up there, sitting idle at the moment.
I got a question. All right, if everybody remembered, we, the committee hired Lowery Knight. Why were we not the ones to fire her if we did not think she was doing her job?
You didn't fire her, Jimmy, you ratified.
Yeah, but we hired her, we put her in that spot.
The county commission ratifies the recommendation on county mayor.
Yeah, we did ratify.
You said we had upcoming events, Claire, uh, if we don't have a director, who's gonna oversee and manage those events?
Well, we have the operations manager, Randy, and the lady over the kitchen, and they have to, but they have to.
Operations manager, is that what he is now?
Yes, Ben O'Connell.
I thought he was maintenance.
He was maintenance manager.
Maintenance, operations manager's been his title the entire time.
It will specifically be hiring an event manager, set the title on her.
A parks and rink director again is all that we're talking about.
How much money is the, the garbage, the collection, whatever, in the red? Where are we at countywide in the red? Anybody have a number?
Still about two point nine.
About how much?
Two point nine.
Two point nine million in the red?
Think of back to nineteen.
Over the past thirty years.
You mean this year, not for just this year?
Toes.
For twenty-eight years.
For twenty-eight years.
Since nineteen ninety-six.
The county owes two point nine million to Waste Management, whoever.
No, no, no.
We, we've absorbed it.
That, that, we got a ton of books, we're, we're not.
Customers not paid us, paid McNairy County, is what that number is. How much are we in the red?
How much we in the red?
The red right now, with Steve's last budget, for the next twelve months, which is, we did, we have to deal with waste connections on calendar year, not a fiscal year. The county's, you know, but we are a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit from what you need to match the budget you presented to our committee. Two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one paying customers.
Right.
You have, and, and how much is owed on the Ag Center?
Two million.
Two million.
How much do we still owe the contractor? I understand he hasn't signed off on it yet?
Contractor hasn't finished all the punch list items yet.
How much do we owe him?
I'd have to look, I'm not sure, and I'm not avoiding the question, but probably a hundred and fifty thousand, I don't know where it is.
What, what punch list has he not done?
I'd have, we've got a copy of his list, and we met there.
I got a copy of the architect's punch list.
We met some.
Did y'all give him?
We met some weeks ago up there, and there is some items, like the parking lot drainage out front, they, they corrected that. And they corrected some things since then, and I, I just have to look, lay it deep.
He didn't do that there, was it?
Yes, but they redid the funding because the building was too low, yeah.
All right. I, I think it's sale, we can't give away a thirty thousand dollar fire truck, and we are almost three million in the red, and we can't. The spending has to stop.
Amen.
For all the commissions, I don't care where you're from, what district you're in, the spending's gotta stop. You can't, you cannot prosper by spending. Borrowing will not get you there.
The two point nine million dollars is not spending.
Two million for the Ag Center, two fifty for the garbage, a hundred and fifty for this is, is the money I'm talking, I'm not talking about the two point nine for twenty-eight years. That's still almost three million dollars that we're in the hole in the red, somebody's gotta be accountable for that.
You're one point two million upside down in the highway department.
That's right.
Anybody know any more? Is there any more?
All right, do you have any other?
Yes, sir, got a couple of quick ones just from tonight. Um, it was mentioned that we could keep Jackson Madison County as ambulance service, if we choose to, or Magnolia doesn't, one of the two. If we, if we choose them, am I right, the two hundred and nineteen thousand we gonna make loan payments with, we gonna pay for an ambulance service? So, we, we don't have any money to make a loan payment then.
We didn't have the other money that you revenue that fell out, so we couldn't use for that, I don't think we did that.
Okay. Um, it's also asked about how many ambulances Magnolia's gonna supply, and it, like you said, hopefully as much as Jackson. Does anybody know how much, many Jackson supplies? Does anybody know how much, many Jackson supplies?
Three.
Three? But they guarantee one to be in the county, don't they?
They guarantee what?
One to be in the county?
Yes, at all times.
Okay. Oh, so if, if the three is out of county, they will send one in from somewhere?
Three.
Okay. Uh, so that means we're gonna buy at least three ambulances McNairy County will have to, to keep the same that y'all said. Am I right? Possibly four, okay. I'm just... Uh, I, I just wanted, that's just, well, I was sitting here, some questions I had. And I guess the last one is, when y'all approved, well, not the last one, we have one more. When the mayor and clerk signed the paperwork for PEC, when, when we signed those papers, we got another two million dollars at that point? It's not? Okay, it's a line of credit, construction...
That's not, that's not a bar.
Okay.
They're just signing, you know?
Okay, I'm, I'm good there, 'cause that was, uh... I guess the dollar amount to go along with, I was gonna ask some, the other conversation that just happened. Uh, last comment I wanted to make is, last month, everybody voted that we need to vote on the agenda before the meeting starts. That was good for last month. We didn't do that this month.
We didn't vote on the agenda, they didn't vote on that at the last meeting. They talked about it, but they didn't vote on the name of the motion.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm just checking on changing rules, so I'm good.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda from now. Free to any commission meeting.
Okay.
That motion, Keith Jernigan, say, Pamela Carroll approved the agenda, prior to getting into commission meeting. Any discussion?
Would that limit any discussion off of any topics?
I don't think so.
The only thing it would do is allow you to add or strike from the orders of the day, which is your agenda.
But if you wanna add an issue, you have to amend the agenda.
Correct.
That takes supermajority to amend that, right?
All right, everybody understand the motion? Call roll, which part, vote yes, vote no, what you got?
Clay Garner?
Yes.
David McCullough?
Yes.
Chad Belton?
Yes.
Terry McCormick?
Yes.
Ryan Sis?
Yeah.
Pamela Carroll?
Yes.
Jimmy Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Tricia Underwood?
Yes.
Keith Jernigan?
Yes.
Jay Weatherford?
Yes.
Adam Toole?
Yes.
Brenda Colley?
Yes.
Philip Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Jimmy Ray?
Yes.
Rex Davis?
Yes.
Jeff Kelly?
Yes.
Brad Hunt?
Yes.
Doug Knight?
Yes.
Willie Taft?
All right, ma'am. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have one more topic.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'd like to thank the person in last meeting that took the time to say he needs to read the paperwork before going forward. Y'all need to read the paperwork as if you're signing life away. Anyways, and Trump this past summer said that those governments that are squandering the people's money over pet projects and everything that go nowhere should be held accountable, not the taxpayers. I think we should take that into consideration when we do pass bills and stuff.
All right, we have another, Jimmy Boy, yes, and Justin Howard.
Curry?
Say.
Motion, Jimmy Hollinsworth, to second the move. Anybody? Anyone want to say aye?
Aye.
Anyone want to vote, what's your carry?
Could I make another motion, that picture include the financial report every month?
You didn't have it, when you wanted to put it in back? All right. Second that motion.
Second.
Second, Pamela Carroll, any discussion? Anybody want to say aye?
Aye.
Anyone vote? Motion carry.
I'd like for it to be noted, too, that we've asked for Magnolia CEO or representative from Magnolia to come up to the Emergency Services Committee over the ambulance deal, over the ER, over, uh, specifically, I've done a plan, too, to be either the purchase or leasing of their equipment.
I've got some right here, I have today, Keith, I should, Philip Hollinsworth, he doesn't look too favorable to leasing.
He what?
He doesn't look too favorable to leasing, and besides, makes the grant for the late leasing, so it's... Most grants you got to pay a while, get the grant, up the grant. But anyways, we'll be, have to have that conversation, but anyway, I have been trying to get that information, and he'll get some of it. All right.
I want to ask you and the commissioners, the county is so much in debt. Tell me how we're gonna get out of it. Besides passing a property tax on the ones of us that own property, which is forty-two percent, forty-three percent of the county that owns property. Why do we have to pay for the money y'all are? And I'm, I, I'm talking to my people also. Why are we having to pay for all this? The property owners. Brad, you own property. Philip, you own property. Clay, you own property.
I'll touch on one thing from last year, we did not raise property tax simply for that reason. It's forty, forty-something percent paying a hundred percent of the bill. And that's why we did not do it, we discussed, we squeezed by last year, we discussed having to go to a wheel tax. Definitely...
I thought the tax went up.
The property tax was also...
That's from the state, that wasn't out.
But you cannot tax yourself out of debt.
I, I don't disagree with that, but we're...
Do what? Oh, okay, I misunderstood you, I'm...
We're in such a state that we weren't, we began this process, even before debt was a sin, though.
I was reading, but, but why do we have to pay this? Why did we give him this kind of debt to start with? Garbage shouldn't be in this kind of debt.
I don't argue that. We've been, we've been working on that diligently, and we've had better collection results than anybody ever before. But when, when I was first elected, they came in my office, I'm talking about the auditors came in my office, and wanted me to sign off on a million-dollar loss in garbage. And I said, what are you talking about? That was when I was first elected.
And right when they're gone...
She explained to them...
Why don't we just sell McNairy County to the whole surrounding counties and let them take care of us?
The two-point-nine million dollars is debt that's owed to McNairy County. It's not debt that McNairy County owes, to be very clear. But I would not sign that million-dollar loss, sign off on that. But every year, the county mayor's been signing off on a million-dollar loss in solid waste annually. In other words, writing off a million dollars of your, of our money, our taxpayers' money. And I refuse to do that because it's not the right thing to do. We need to try to collect it. Whoever owes the garbage bill needs to pay it. It's a fee-based, it's a fee-based service. And the fee has got to finish or foot the bill for the cost.
But if I decide not to pay my garbage bill, ain't nothing done. You're gonna put a lien on my property.
That's right.
Guess what? None of my properties ever gonna be for sale, so you're not gonna collect.
None that's ever transferred in your family, it will...
It, it, it ain't gonna happen, it's gonna tuck care of. So...
We can't shoot 'em.
Why not?
I'm just saying, we have, the county has to provide a service, as state law. We either have, we either have centers, or we have door-to-door pickup. I mean, you, I understand what you're saying, Terry, but you're, you're talking about something that we can't control.
State land.
How, how can we? Somebody said, yes, we can.
Yes, you can, you've got Title V that covers residential, and you've got Title VI that covers commercial.
Well, you should, you should just...
And then you've got, you say you've got uniform commercial codes that back that up.
So we can just start picking up garbage?
Yes, sir, because you do not have a wet ink signature on the majority of the population of this county in the first place, and contract is to be written, to be enforced, is written by law.
We need to get, we need to get, we need to get Kelly back up here then, so he...
All right, does anything motion to adjourn?
Hang on, I'm gonna say something down about it. I'm, I'm not perfect in no form or fashion. But I do wanna say, commissioners and general public, when we're trying to do business for other people, put your personal agendas aside, just forget about it. I'm, I'm not talking about one indi, one individual person. I'm just saying, if we would all try to be more like Jesus, I mean, we wouldn't have all these arguments, we wouldn't be doing all this.